If you'd like to call the roll, Kim.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Here.
Chang.
Here.
Quoc.
Here.
James.
Here.
Mayor Loenthal.
I'm here too. So, this meeting, this portion of tonight's meeting is going to be a presentation of the trail alignment and feasibility of the Stevens Creek Trail. As I understand it, we're not here to make a decision tonight, just to listen and be informed and maybe take some public comment. Is that accurate? Okay. Well, take it away, Therese.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for taking the time tonight. I know it was hard to schedule this in. This process has been underway a long time, 14 months with the task force, and prior to that, I think Jonna was on board for six months. For those of you who haven't had the pleasure to meet Jonna Sokel, she's the environmental planner on this project. She has a long history of trail development. With the Stevens Creek Trail, she's been involved for 12 years, since it started in Mountain View. It's been very successful for them. She's not only responsible for the design and the environmental planning for the trail, but also raising much of the money that went into constructing the project. She's currently working on a number of interesting challenges, not just within Cupertino, but was recently hired by the Golden Gate National Recreation Area to work on the new pedestrian access for the Golden Gate Bridge. And there's a number of agencies involved with that, including the Bridge District. So she's very familiar with trails, trail construction, and complicated public process. The reason for meeting tonight is that the project is at the point where it needs to go to outside agencies for review, and the council hasn't seen it yet. So we want you, you've probably heard a lot about it, but you haven't actually seen what the task force's recommendations are, nor have you heard what issues drove those recommendations. So I think before a lot of outside agencies spend time reviewing this, it's important that you're comfortable with it. This meeting is not noticed for action. It's for your information and to give you an opportunity to ask questions. So with that, this is sort of the goal, someday to have a whole series of trails, including the Stevens Creek Trail, within the city of Cupertino for all kinds of activities. Your goals, your current goals include walkability, and staff is specifically working not only on the Stevens Creek Trail, but also on the San Tomas-Saratoga Creek Trail, which hopefully will go into construction this summer, the Union Pacific Trail, for which she recently received a feasibility study, and the Mary Avenue over crossings being pursued. All of these intended to start to provide a network of non-motorized ways to move about the city of Cupertino. When we started this process, we had to develop a mailing list. We started with an initial letter of notification that went to people along the entire corridor, informing them of dates where specific study areas would be analyzed. And then, subsequent to that, study area mailings were processed. There were people that asked to be placed on a general mailing list, and they received information whether or not it was an action or a discussion item that was in their backyard. We also did notification in the Cupertino scene and the courier. This is Marie's working map. We just scanned it in as streets were added and areas were added, as we tracked people that were notified. The planning process then started with the council goals. It started with the council adopting walkability as a goal, and specifically identifying Stevens Creek Trail as a corner for development. A task force was gathered, and to the right of everybody, I have, I put two documents. One is the PowerPoint presentation, so you could make notes. But there's also a list of meetings, and behind that, there's a task force roster. So 15-member task force, they're volunteers. They signed on for a one-year project. We have exceeded that by a quarter year now. They signed up for one, maybe two, meetings a month at this point. They have attended 17 public meetings. There were two meetings early on where they were getting organized as a task force, but they have, to date, held 19 meetings, 17 which were public process meetings. All 19 were noticed, but 17 of them were public participation encouraged. And they have been receiving reports from various experts on geotechnical issues, biological issues, funding issues. They've been processing material from consultants, as well as taking public comment. Their recommendations then inform the draft feasibility study, which is where we're at now, preparing that. And we are to the point now where we need agency input. So as I mentioned earlier, this is going to go to the larger outside world and be reviewed by such agencies as Department of Fish and Game, National Marine Fisheries, Army Corps, and the Water District. The Parks and Recreation Commission will hold a hearing on this to get input from user groups. And then the Planning Commission under SEQA and the Environmental Review Committee will hold reviews, their product being the mitigation and monitoring plan, which will also go into the final feasibility study. And they'll be looking at yet more technical issues, having to do with traffic, restoration, impacts to adjacent properties, and so on. The council then will hold a public hearing on the final feasibility study, after that mitigation and monitoring plan is drafted, and ultimately, which started, what started as a council goal, will end in some council action to adopt or not adopt a feasibility These are then actions that are yet to be taken. I mentioned the Parks and Recreation Commission's review, the draft initial study circulation, the SEQA review, Environmental Review Committee review, Planning Commission, and ultimately City Council. With that, I will turn this over to Jonna. The list of meetings held is also before you. That wouldn't fit on one slide, but, or even two, but the dates and the subject matter of the 17 meetings is in that handout.
Good evening, and thanks very much for taking the time to come up to speed on a complicated project that the city's been working on for quite a while now. There was quite a bit of background work on mapping and land ownership and geotechnical issues and biological issues before we met with the task force. And our first meeting with the task force was in January of last year. And during January and February, we worked to form a task force and to organize the public input process. The task force, one of the very first items of the task force was the development of feasibility study goals that would drive trail alignments. And the key goals are here before you. And those goals were to preserve and restore the natural environment of the creek corridor. There are about 60 acres of publicly-owned open space along the creek, and 130 acres of new parkland that will be added to Rancho San Antonio County Park as part of the Oak Valley Development. The task force, which is made up of community members and business leaders and trail users' groups, wanted to reach out to the community and engage them in as many ways as possible, not only now, but in the future, should the project move forward. There was also a key goal to identify trail alignments and staging areas and access points to the trail that would minimize encroachment on public property, on private property. And I'll talk quite a lot about that in Study Areas C and D. And then, of course, to provide a safe and secure trail that's easy to maintain, so there's minimum operating costs to the city should they move forward. There are really two generalized study areas. One is the hill property around Rancho San Antonio County Park, which is off Cristo Rey and Stevens Creek Boulevard. And then the other area is along Stevens Creek, and that goes from Stevens Creek County Park all the way down to Stevens Creek Boulevard. Here's a map that shows you some of these areas. You can see Highway 280 and Highway 85, the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. The creek begins, actually up in the Santa Cruz Mountains, but comes through Stevens Creek County Park, and flows past Linda Vista Park, Deep Cliff Golf Course, beneath McClellan Ranch Road into McClellan Ranch, through Blackberry Farm and the golf course, past Stockelmeyer, and out to Stevens Creek Boulevard. The other study area is the hill property here, which is around the Forum and the Oak Valley Development. As you'll notice, the creek continues to flow through the city of Cupertino underneath Highway 280. This area was not considered for study, and was removed from study back in 1996. In this area of the creek, the homeowners actually owned to the center line of the creek. And there was a task force that came before this one that looked at the generalized study area, and that's how these study areas were selected. Now, I'm going to take you through each of the study areas, some of the challenges that we faced, and the trail alignments that were proposed. Rancho San Antonio County Park is about to acquire another 130 acres around the Oak Valley Development. That is thanks to the Cupertino City Council from years past, who incorporated that in a development agreement. In this area, we wanted to connect the county park and the Hammond-Snyder home, which are in that area. We wanted to look and gather the views from the Juan Batista de Enza expedition back in 1776. The lookout knoll is in this area, and it's the first time that expedition saw San Francisco Bay. We have sensitive species on site, including the red-legged frog and several plant species. Trail use and surfacing has really been established in that area by county parks in Mid-Penn, who operate the land. We also had a Union Pacific Railroad trail crossing. Here's Study Area A. It backs up against Highway 280, Foothill Boulevard and the Union Pacific Tracks, Stevens Creek Boulevard. The Kaiser Cement is up in this area. There are about 3,000 of acres of open spaceland here, owned by the county at Mid-Penn. They operate the park for equestrians and for hikers and runners. There are no mountain cyclists allowed within this area. There is, however, a road bike route, which travels from Los Altos underneath Highway 280, and along Permanente Creek into the parking area. The goal was to connect to that route, as well as to take advantage of the new 130 acres that were going to be provided. So two types of trails were proposed. A multi-use hard-surface trail for biking was proposed along this red area to connect out to Stevens Creek Boulevard, which essentially would be the way to then connect down to the creek corridor. The map also indicates on-street bicycle lanes in the yellow lines, and bike routes. And we've proposed a bike route coming in on Cristo Rey to then hook up with a paving The blue routes are equestrian and hiking routes. This is the De Enza lookout, and the views out to Silicon Valley and the San Francisco Bay are seen from that area. The Union Pacific Trail is crossing, is here. Then we're going to run a trail down and connect out to the street. This is a view of Cristo Rey as it moves into the Oak Valley Development. You can see the wetland habitat at the bottom, as well as the blue oak habitat. This is a view from the Anza Knoll, looking out over Silicon Valley. Today, if you were standing there, you'd be able to see the wonderful snow in the Mount Hamilton Range. Study Area B begins up at Stevens Creek County Park and extends to Linda Vista Park. This is an area that the city does not own. This is owned currently by Canyon Heights Academy. In the time that I have been associated with a project, it has had three property owners. Past development projects have included private residential developments, and there is now a school proposed in that area. So very much similar to the Oak Valley Development, when and if this area should develop, our ability to put a trail through the site will be part of the development agreement that the council and the staff will craft with whatever development takes place there. The design challenges here, and neighborhood concerns, a key neighborhood concern in this area was a regard for parking at Linda Vista. Some of the design challenges, the technical ones, where we had really steep and eroding quarry slopes. We have sensitive species and wetland habitats at the bottom of the hill quarry. And some of the benefits are the ability to connect Cupertino residents to the county park without having to get in the car, and again, the really extraordinary views. Here's a map of that area. Stevens Canyon Road is here, and that connects out to the Boulevard. McClellan Road is right down in this area. You have Deep Cliff Golf Course, Linda Vista Park, and then this huge parcel here is really all owned by Canyon Heights Academy. The quarry floor is here. We have wetlands that form a small tributary that go out to Stevens Creek, and then flow out to the bay. The trails within the county park that are hollow are existing trails, and then several types of trails have been proposed through the quarry. If you were to drive into Linda Vista Park, immediately to your left, there's a gulch that goes up the canyon. And we've proposed a mountain biking and hiking-only trail through that gulch, not through the bottom of the gulch, but through, up the slope of the gulch, that would then come up to the top of the canyon slopes, drop down using the contours of the canyon, and come out to connect to the existing routes within Stevens Creek County Park. We analyzed this to see if we could accommodate equestrians, which are accommodated within Stevens Creek County Park, and it just seemed as though there would be too much traffic for the canyon slopes, and that the heavy weight of equestrians would not be supported by some of these eroding slopes. We did propose a multi-use trail, which is in existence today, although it's not private property, and this follows the PG&E Fire Road and Maintenance Access Road here. I'll talk a little bit more about Linda Vista Park in just a minute, but there is an existing system of pedestrian pathways within Linda Vista Park. There's a parking area here, and this parking area is generally vacant on the weekdays, but very busy on the weekends. And residents in this area were concerned that any additional staging for the trail would further complicate parking issues here. And the other interesting fact on this map is that although Canyon Heights Academy owns this quarry area, years ago, they actually owned Linda Vista Park, too, when it was a previous owner. And the park was acquired by the city and developed. But a piece that was not developed and not acquired was the old Hall Road. And this used to be a way for the haul trucks to get out of the quarry and get down to McClellan Road. So actually, this property owner owns both the acreage within the quarry and this 40-foot wide easement. This is the entrance to Stevens Creek County Park off Stevens Canyon Road, and this is a view from the county park, looking back across the quarry. This is the quarry floor. These are old quarry spoils that remain, and these are the steep quarry slope cuts. On the back of this knoll is Linda Vista Park. The gulch is down here at the low point. So instead of traveling to the very top, we limited the grade of the trail by using the gulch. The trail would then come down, come across, and down, and out to connect with existing trails. You can see from this photo that it's already being used by the public, even though this is indeed private property.
Jonna, can you go back a couple of slides, just to tie that in one more time?
The picture was taken from over here, viewing across this way. Here's the gulch, and here's the peak up in this area that you saw in that slide.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay. The wetlands are in this area here, and up into the quarry as it extends this area. And there's a small tributary that flows here and out to Stevens Creek. This is the slope that you were looking at, and you can see that there is an informal trail that travels up to the gulch now. It's used informally by joggers. Now, Areas B, C, and D really are all connected, and all together, although Areas C and D are on the valley floor of Stevens Canyon. It's not up in the quarry area. Area C extends from Linda Vista Park, would cross McClellan Road, connect into McClellan Ranch, and onto Blackberry Farm. The ownership here is primarily city-owned open space, except for this old Hall Road piece, which is a 40-foot-wide swath. Design challenges here are providing connectivity to the open space along the creek corridor, protecting the privacy of the neighbors that are off Linda Vista Drive and the courts that are there, locating the trail within the open space, offering the views out over Stevens Creek Valley. This is the first area where a trail potentially could begin to climb, and you could actually see the whole creek valley. A key concern also for Linda Vista neighborhoods was preserving the character of Linda Vista Park. Linda Vista Park is one of the first parks built in the city. It was really a gem for the city before the city started and had the funds to make some of the other parks that are within today's park system. This was the first time where there was concern expressed over the type of trail use and the surfacing. And this has been an issue that the task force has struggled with. And really, two types of trails came out of that discussion. One was a soft-surface, single-use, walking-only trail, and the other was a multi-used paved surface, very similar to the picture you saw at the beginning of the show. The multi-use trail would serve bicyclists, inline skaters, strollers, wheelchairs, walkers, birders. A soft-surface trail would serve birders, joggers, walkers, and it could accommodate wheelchairs, but it would not serve any of the other wheeled vehicles. And then we have a crossing at McClellan Road, which is a challenge. Let me move on to the map. Let's see. Here we are, back at the edge of the quarry with Linda Vista Park. We have Monta Vista High School and the other schools in the area. McClellan Road comes down the hill, through the valley, and then takes a hairpin turn back up to Stevens Canyon Road. The creek is flowing out towards the bay in this direction. These are the community gardens within McClellan Ranch. This is the open meadow of McClellan Ranch. This is an existing interpretive trail at McClellan Ranch that is underneath the riparian canopy along the creek, and is used by environmental education programs sponsored by the city. The goal of the task force was to try and identify an alignment within the public open space land. In areas where we didn't feel that that was possible, we were to look to city streets. And we had originally proposed an alignment here that the neighborhood was very concerned about, because there was a sense that their privacy was invaded by the trail. And as a result, we also looked at alternative alignments on Linda Vista Drive. We held neighborhood meetings specifically with this neighborhood, and came up with a redesign of the trail, which really seemed to meet most of the neighbors' concerns. With the type of alignment, there is still concern in this neighborhood over the use, whether it should be a single-surface soft-use trail or a multi-use trail. We also struggled with an underpass design in this area, and an underpass, as opposed to an at-grade crossing, was overwhelmingly supported by the neighborhood. At this time, there are two crossings that are going to go forward on the task force recommendations. One is a redesign of the entire bridge. This area here, all floods in high flows. The bridge is a constriction point in the creek. When we did a cost estimate of doing an offline tunnel versus a brand-new bridge, the bridge was slightly more expensive. And when we reviewed those options with the Santa Clara Valley Water District, they were much more supportive of a new bridge, should the financing be available to do that, and they might even partner on that. Or if we don't do that, we would do an at-grade crossing, very similar to the one I will describe for you at Stevens Creek Boulevard. Let me show you a little more detail now. Here's the entrance into Linda Vista Park. Again, the two overarching concerns here still are parking, and would there be enough parking to accommodate folks who wanted to use the quarry? And then concern over the type of trail. The trail has access off the street, comes in separate from the roadway, and then goes up towards the quarry, or comes along the very backside of the park, and connects down around the Big Meadow to the old Hall Road, the 40-foot right away. And this seemed to meet neighborhood concerns. They did not want a trail that shot straight through. They were concerned about connections in the parking area and just the proximity right along here, and of users using that trail, so we wrapped it around. And we've added some new parking in this area. This is a view of the old Hall Road. You can see it still really kind of exists as an old piece of pavement. There are residences that line this Hall Road. I believe there are 14 single-family homes, as well as the Cupertino Swim and Racquet Club in this area. Some homes are set back a little bit, some are right on the edge of the road. Originally, we had thought we could use this road, and we would depress it to give people more privacy through a vertical change. And homeowners were not convinced that that would be sufficient. So what we have done is actually close this entire road and propose revegetation of it with native trees and shrubs. You can see that this is a summer shot, and there are a number of trees that have no leaves. There were fires back in that area. And we have proposed an alignment that is below this slope by six feet, and would go through this area. The alignment's proposed on a boardwalk, which seems kind of odd, but the boardwalk allows us to place the trail to preserve the trees in the area, where if we were to just simply cut the slope out, you don't have the same mobility. And here's the old roadbed being revegetated. From that trail alignment, these are the views you'd have out over Deep Cliff Golf Course and the Stevens Creek Corridor. Once the trail crosses McClellan, again, either at an underpass underneath a new bridge, or at an at-grade crossing at an existing crosswalk that's there, the McClellan Ranch Task Force recommended that the trail not go through the meadow, but skirt behind the community gardens, which is really quite a wonderful view of that area, and it's of a resource that not a lot of people in Cupertino see. This will require some movement of the 4-H pens in that area, and we'll also have to redesign that. Once we leave the community garden area, there's open space here that's also somewhat undiscovered. It's an old walnut orchard that's on the backside of McClellan before you enter Blackberry Study Area D picks up where we left off in McClellan, extends through Blackberry Farm, and then connects to sidewalks, bike lanes, and bus routes on Stevens Creek Boulevard. The ownership here is all city-owned. Here, our neighborhood concerns were a variety. One, again, is the overarching issue of trail use and surfacing. We also have a single-family residence that's actually located within Blackberry Farm. We have homes that are opposite Stockelmeyer, that are in close proximity to a potential trail. We have the Stevens Creek Boulevard connection, which is difficult, very high rate of traffic and high volume. And then we had some other interesting issues. Blackberry Farm, as you know, is a fee-use area. Those fees are used to service the debt, the bond debt, for the purchase of that open space. And the Stevens Creek Trail is intended to be a free public amenity. And there's some thought that if the trail were to extend without any barrier through Blackberry Farm, that the revenue generated at the park would diminish. So we had a trail design guideline that required us to keep the trail essentially separate from the park. Now, that may change in time as that debt is serviced, or if policies changes take place. But it was a key driving constraint to the development of the trail. We also have two entrance roads that come in off San Fernando. One entrance road off San Fernando, it then splits and forks, and we needed to get pedestrians and bicyclists safely across that road, and accommodate 1,100 cars that come in to the park on a busy day that also have to go out. So there's a lot of car traffic within the park. Around this time in the study, we received a request from petitioners who lived primarily in the Blackberry Farm area, but also up in the Linda Vista area. And they brought this petition to the City Council on October 1st, and to the task force on October 2nd. And my little sort of anecdote is from an author, Charles Little, who's written Greenways for America and A Sense of Place. And he says that building a greenway is often a lot about building community. And through this trail planning process, we've actually been building community all the way along, because when residents decide to submit a petition, they have to go door-to-door and meet one another. So there's been community building, even if there has been community ascension throughout the process. Anyways, this petition requested that the task force look at alignments outside of the corridor. They proposed the UP Railroad alignment. They proposed an alignment on Stevens Canyon Road. They proposed alignments that went through the Hanson, the Kaiser Cement quarry area, and anything else that we could come up with. Again, we received the petition on October 1 and 2. It was referred to- It was referred to staff, and the task force took staff suggestion to meet with these neighbors, just like we had been meeting with neighbors up in Linda Vista. And there was a meeting that was held with the petitioners. Then we reviewed some of those alignments. A workshop was held in December to discuss some of those alignments. And eventually, several of the task force members felt that some of these alternatives had merit. However, they were actually, in many cases, already being studied by the city through the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, or they were outside the sphere of influence of the city, meaning they were in county lands. So some of those ideas have been forwarded to the petition, but the task force felt that their job was to report back to you on whether we could build a trail within the Stevens Creek Corridor or not. Okay, so here's the Study Area D map. Stevens Creek Boulevard is here. Foothill is here. Here's Cristo Rey up in this area. Let's start with Blackberry Farm. When we first talked about Study Area D, we were trying to decide between an alignment on the west bank versus the east bank. And this was very early on in the process. The west bank, due to the configuration of the park and the topography and the creek channel, required the use of five bridges to connect the trail to keep it, again, outside the fee-use area of the park. It's also required running it on scenic circle in this area, near scenic circle on public land. That alignment was set aside by the task force, and we focused all of our energy on providing an alignment on the east bank of the park. That east bank alignment comes through the walnut orchard at McClellan and then will hug the east side of the park. Here are the playfields that are in Blackberry Farm, and the alignment would come right through here. And playfields are back here. These are a series of maintenance buildings and restrooms that are in the floodway and have been flooded three or four times over the past 20 years when we've had very high storms. These will be demoed and resituated out of the floodplain, and the trail would move through this area. You also can see in this picture the back of the private residence that's within Blackberry. And we've had sort of an informal goal to try and keep the trail 25 feet at a minimum from the back of the property line, not necessarily the house, but the actual property line. The trail then would descend into a short 40-foot tunnel and come up through the back of the lawn area near the pool. This would be in a depressed pathway, again, trying to keep the tree trail from the fee-use area. Here's an example of that. Here's the trail coming through. Here's the very short tunnel. Here's a slightly depressed pathway where you're somewhat below grade. And another short tunnel where the other entry road, these are the two roads that come in. And then we come down towards the golf course and follow the trail out towards the creek. This redesign also calls for a redesign of the entrance of Blackberry Farm. This is the existing retreat center. Right now, there's an administration building right here. This would be removed and replanted in a central entry kiosk, more like a state park or federal park. We would remove a few trees in this area to provide for double stacking of cars as they enter in order to facilitate the extensive movement of vehicles in and out of the park and then in a single exit. This is the existing home that you saw on that slide. We looked at other alternatives here. We looked at an at-grade crossing that came this way to a controlled crossing right here. We could not meet the 25-foot minimum setback in this area. We also looked at an alternative that brought the trail up, and you had a canopy experience through these live oaks, and then crossed above the cars. The preference of the community and of the task force was for the depressed pathway. This is the entrance into Blackberry Farm, and there will be a neighborhood access here so they can reach the trail. And this is the very corner of the retreat center. And there would, two or three of these trees in this area would need to be removed in order to accommodate the new entry kiosk area. These are Monterey pines, and they are not in the best of shape. As many of you may know, with great sadness, it's predicted that 95% of the Monterey pines within the state of California will die from a pitch canker disease that they have. As a matter of fact, the forests within all of California seem to be under assault with sudden oak death syndrome, pitch canker, fur and pine-borer beetle problems. And that, again, is a view of that area. The trail then follows the meshnet fencing that separates Blackberry Golf Course from the farm, comes down to another maintenance area. This area is very much in the floodway. It will be removed and consolidated with the other buildings up higher out of the floodway. And the trail would take a turn here and then cross out near the eighth tee on, this was a proposal, a wooden pedestrian bridge over to the Stockelmeyer area, which is the only orchard on the Stevens Creek Trail within the valley. This happens to be a citrus orchard, which is greatly treasured by the residents in the area. It is really a gem. It's just a beautiful location. The trail would travel between the orchard and the creek and then come out to the street on the existing ped bridge. And we proposed a three-legged crosswalk at Farlap and Blue Pheasant. We've also proposed a reconfiguration of the Blue Pheasant parking lot. There's an abandoned road right-of-way here. We figure with the reconfiguration of this, we'll be able to add an additional 20 or so parking spaces. We'd have a crosswalk here, the main crosswalk for crossing the Boulevard. You say, why do we need a crosswalk? If this trail indeed is open to cyclists, we want to get cyclists in the bike lanes traveling in the right direction with traffic, so we don't encourage them to break rules. We also want to facilitate crossing for the Farlap neighborhood to connect to the trail. So a little bit about parking, which has been an issue. There are 156 existing parking spaces along the corridor now. We've proposed an additional 28, which would bring the total to 184. As you note, down at the bottom, I did not include the 950 parking spaces that exist at Blackberry, simply because you have to pay an entry fee to use those parking spaces. And then there are access points. These are points that have no parking. They're simply ways to get onto the trail. Through Linda Vista Park, through the Swim and Racquet Club, who actually use the old Hall Road now, they actually have a gate out of their facility. Through McClellan Road, the ranch, Burn Avenue off San Fernando, you'd be able to get into the park by walking and riding, and then the Boulevard. So a summary of some of the major issues that we tackled over the last six months were parking, surfacing, the two street crossings, the alignment through McClellan Ranch, the alignment along the Hall Road, and the entrance to Blackberry Farm. And I would say the two outstanding issues, three outstanding issues. I think that the task force as a whole, although they have recommended the depressed pathway with two tunnels at Blackberry Farm, is not happy with that. Based on the design constraints that we had, primarily there, the private residence and the fee-use versus free trail, required that we could not bring the trail closer to the creek. And although they recommended that at their last meeting in January, I think they, as well as the community, would potentially like to see the trail closer to the creek. A second key issue is trail use and surfacing. And there is still a desire by some members of the community to have a soft-surface trail that focuses on environmental education and interpretation and reflection. That type of a trail would be unique to Cupertino. It's nowhere else within the Stevens Creek Valley Trail, and the setting would be ideal for that. The task force ultimately took a vote on this issue and voted 9-3 in favor of a multiuse path, because the task force felt that it would be impractical to prevent children from riding the trail to school, from walking the trail with a child on a tricycle, and from policing and monitoring that activity. They wanted it to be an inclusive amenity for the public. But again, that was a 9-3 vote. And then the final issue is still the desire for maybe more parking or proof that there's no need for more parking. And I think those are sort of the outstanding issues. The parking issue will be analyzed by the traffic consultant who's working on the SEQA document. And then just to briefly summarize, we've got a variety of trail uses and surfaces between the study areas. Study Area A was equestrian and hiker, as well as the multiuse bike and everybody pathway to connect out to Stevens Creek Boulevard. Soft-surface up to the knoll and some bike lanes on Cristo Rey. Area B was really a mountain bike and hiker area because of the steep terrain and eroding slopes with then connections into the county park. Area C was a multiuse trail behind the community gardens connecting into Blackberry and either a new underpass or an at-grade crossing at McClellan. Again, about 2/3 of a mile of trail through Blackberry. New crosswalk at Stevens Creek Boulevard and additional parking at, this is not Linda Vista, but actually at the Blue Pheasant, which is the Blackberry Farm Golf Course. And there's a summary of the proposed amenities. It's really about six miles of trail, another 3/4 of a mile of bike lane, new crosswalk at Stevens Creek Boulevard, and a new crosswalk or new bridge with trail underpass at McClellan. The work products, when you see this project again, include a biological report, a geotechnical report, a trail operations and maintenance report, and a funding report, and eventually a feasibility study. And all of those items, well, not the feasibility study yet, because that's in process, have been presented to the task force. And there's just a view of the wonderful oak sycamore forest that lines the creek throughout Blackberry Farm, McClellan Ranch, Deep Cliff Golf Course. So with that, I'd be happy to take questions.
Any questions in the council? Oh, we wait for that. If there's somebody in the audience that would like to speak to this matter, you can fill out a card that you can get on the back door and bring it up to maybe Carol. But let's take the council questions first for staff.
Not yet.
Wait for it. I have a couple of questions. First one is for Terrence Smith about the makeup of the committee. You mentioned about 15 people on the committee. Does it represent a cross-section of all the people in a community that might be affected? And how's the committee formed? Is people come up, they are interested, you form the committee, or?
You have the roster before you. There were businesses, there are some business representatives. Those are businesses who are immediately adjacent to the proposed trail corridor. So those people were included. Representatives from neighborhoods who expressed an interest or who were known. Now, the committee was pretty much selected before I started, so I don't know exactly how people were recruited. Jonna can help with that. But representatives for stakeholder groups, they weren't, it wasn't really a community-at-large group. It was more people with definite interest in the corridor. Swim and Racquet Club, Deep Cliff Golf Course, Kaiser Permanente. We had representatives from the various neighborhoods. We had the Audubon involved, friends of Stevens Creek Trail. Can I sing anybody? Parks and Recreation Commissioner, a city council member. Yeah. The chair was David Greenstein, who's also chair of the Bike and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. So it was a broad cross-section, but mostly people who would have the trail in their backyard. I think they were largely represented.
Although, we might want to add to that, that when the meetings were held, the public did attend. And so, as far as these were the actual people, on the task force, there have been numerous public hearings and meetings on this in which everybody had an opportunity to give input, and we certainly have gotten a lot of input from them.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to add a little bit to that, because I was around in those formative days to help answer your question about how the selection was done, Patrick. What the city sort of formally did, the city council did, was to hire Jonna to do this feasibility study. And as she started that process, she asked around City Hall about what kind of process, there's basically two, where the consultant goes off and does this all by themselves and comes up with feasibility, or there's a more public process where you invite the community in. This is explained to me by Jonna, so if I screw up here, let me know. And we decided to go with the more community-oriented approach. It's not a committee of the city, right? We didn't put together that committee. It was really to assist Jonna in getting input so that her decision would be closer to what we will ultimately decide through the hearing process, right? To avoid less change as we go through the hearing process and we hear from the community. So the idea was to get the community input very, very early, even before it was a city-formed committee. So although the city provided tremendous support to that task force, it really was there to help Jonna do a good job. I had a couple of questions, though. Can you explain the ownership of the home that's within Blackberry Farm? I think it's the Cy home, is it? Does the city own the property or the home? Or what defines, what defines that it's within Blackberry Farm?
Well, it's privately owned by the Cy family.
The land and the improvements.
The land and the home and the improvements. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. But to access that home, you actually have to drive down San Fernando, past the retreat center, past the entry building, before you get to the driveway. So they're physically situated in the park right above the pool. So that's why I say it's sort of in the park, because you have to drive.
You have to go through the park.
All the way through the park to get to the driveway.
But you actually exit it when you go in their driveway?
That's right.
I mean, you exit the public lands when you go in their driveway.
Yes, you enter private land when you cross into the driveway.
So they are on, they're not in the park in terms of ownership, city ownership?
No.
Right, okay.
That's right.
And the other thing is, in the unpaved trail, the single-use trail, will strollers work on the kind of surface that we would have there?
For a soft-surface trail?
Yes.
We could put some type of a binder into that to create sort of a natural surface that has some type of a concrete binder that would accommodate wheelchairs. And wheelchairs have a variety of clearances. So I do believe that a stroller certainly could be accommodated by that.
My other question was about wheelchairs, so you got me already. Oh, and you had on your, on the list, the first thing you had on the list of the goals of the task force had to do with preserving and restoring the natural habitat, but you didn't talk about it much in the presentation. So can you give us comments about potentials there?
The very beginning of the feasibility study, we conducted a biological report to see what types of habitats we had and what sensitive species, because we wanted to avoid disturbance to those species. In addition to that, we've prepared a restoration and enhancement report in cooperation with the water district to talk about how, as the trail is developed, could we provide those types of enhancements? And I actually had a whole section of the show on that, which would include tree planting projects, removal of some of the fish barriers that are within the creek, restoration of some of the creek banks, especially within the Blackberry Farm area that have been degraded over the years from heavy use as well as from flooding, potential removal of riprap that prevents riparian creekside vegetation from growing. Now, the city won't need to shoulder all of that burden, but as we've developed trails in other areas, the public almost demands that. They want stewardship of the land. And some of those things might be used as mitigation for the trail, others as actual enhancements above and beyond. And one nice thing I can tell you is that there is a tree planting project planned within Blackberry. I believe it's going to be held on April 27th in association with State Trails Days. So folks are already taking that idea and starting to run with that. But there'd be lots of enhancement opportunities. And as some of you may not know, Stevens Creek is one of four streams that is, still provides a run for the endangered steelhead. And that's really in a tremendous resource that is very special to the community.
Okay. Any other questions?
Let me just comment on something you asked, Richard, because I think it's important for the community to understand a little bit. It sounds kind of weird that we own Blackberry Farms and there's a private residence on the property. So just to take you back a little bit before even our city manager's time, when we bought Blackberry Farm, Carol, I don't know whether you were in the city at the time, but it came with three, I think it was three, at least three, I think only three, private residents right there. And so part of our reserve, which we talk about a lot, why do we have such a high reserve, was we always anticipated as those homes came up for sale, we would buy them. And as you know, we now have done that with two, the latest being what is now our retreat center. And our plan is, when this last residence should come up for sale eventually, we would buy it at that. buy it at that time, too. But when we bought the whole parcel originally, that's kind of how that happened, and that's why it seems kind of strange. That was always our plan and still is our, hopefully, our plan. That's kind of how we've obtained those, similar to the Stockelmeier property, which we bought last year.
Okay, good. All right, with no further questions, why don't we move on then to taking some public First up, Robert Levy. I'm just picking them the way they came in front of me. After Robert will be David Sghiotti.
I apologize for being late. My wife had a medical procedure performed, and I was on my way home when I looked in before to see whether perhaps there were any handouts. The city council asked Jonna and David to perform a feasibility study, and the task force acted nobly to obtain information from the residents, to tabulate it, and to perform the process that Jonna has described for you, which says, yes, if you want to run a bulldozer through there and put down a hard-surface trail, it's possible to do that. The question in my mind is, is it desirable to do that? Even more of a question is, if you put that trail in that form into McClellan Ranch after the city council had already declared it a nature preserve, are you then doing something which is contrary to prior council actions? And the net result then is, is it actionable? Should we get Mr. Killian involved in the whole thing? As you know before, I'm not at all loathe to take you people to court when you do things that I think are despicable. And trying to put a 10-foot-wide hard-surface trail through McClellan Ranch is nothing less than despicable. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. David Sghiotti, followed by Deborah Jamison.
Mm-hmm. You can do that. You can do that.
Hello. My name is David Sghiotti, and I've lived in Cupertino all my life. She's, right, you just passed it. Nope, you passed it.
The close-up view?
Right there, right there. Right there. I was born and lived in management, we can nod it, but for the past 43 years. Teresa, bearers me a little patience here. I was here last week explaining to her that none of the neighbors on that court or up the driveway were notified of this trail when it started 14 months ago. So we're a little behind, so I hope you bear with me. I really don't have a big problem with the trail. Some of the neighbors do, but I said, you know, it's probably something that's going to be inevitable. It's progress, and maybe instead of fighting it, we should jump in and join in and take a little participation to help maybe make it go a little bit our way. My big concern, and my family's concern, is the doubling up of the driveway. The prevailing breeze comes through the golf course, right through our yard, and the fumes are unexplainable, especially when the school buses come down, they sit there at an idle. The routing of the park entrance in front of the high school, the elementary school, and down above is really outdated. Originally, it used to come down Stevens Creek and come down Burn Avenue. Burn used to actually connect to Stevens Creek on old Stevens Creek Road. But with the population as it is now, I really don't see how it can stay that way. We believe it should be bought onto from Stevens Creek somehow between Stockelmeiers and the golf course. I know you guys heard before, the traffic on McClellan is a nightmare. It's a mile and a half coming that route, you go past 46 homes. If you go on the Stevens Creek route, it's approximately a half a mile, and you go by six homes. It's a major thoroughfare compared to Burn and McClellan, and that's our concern, and that's what our main objective is going to be, to try and convince you guys to take it to the other way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Deborah Jamison, followed by David Greenstein.
Yes, thank you. My name is Deborah Jamison. I live at 21346 Rumford Drive, which is not in this vicinity. This is, this is not simply an issue for people directly involved. This is a citywide issue. There are three documents that protect and preserve McClellan Ranch as our one and only nature and rural preserve. Time does not permit me here to support chapter and verse the position I am going to present to you. I do have a document here that I prepared, however, to give to you, which gives you some of the founding documentation from McClellan Ranch, and I urge you to read them yourself. They are the founding ordinance, ordinance 710 of 1975, and the guidelines and regulations issued a couple of years later, and then the master plan for McClellan Ranch Preserve, which was written in 1993. And these documents state the mission, the goals and objectives, the protections, the prescriptions of what is and is not allowed in McClellan Ranch Preserve. As a member of the advisory committee who wrote the master plan, I can speak to the intent of the master plan and the founding ordinance. McClellan Ranch Preserve has been protected as city parkland with very special purposes and whose uses are restricted to those which promote the mission statement. It is not a multi-use park. Among other things, dogs, bicyclists, and picnics are not allowed. The master plan promotes linking the existing Stevens Creek Trail with Blackberry Farm and other open space areas and trail systems. But never did we ever imagine that a new trail 10 feet wide and covered with asphalt would be proposed. Such a construction is clearly in violation of the McClellan Ranch mission statement, the regulations and guidelines, and the master plan. It violates the very essence of protecting in McClellan Ranch a preserve of the natural and human history of Cupertino. Very little has been done working on the master plan in the intervening years. There was a city task force whose job was to implement the master plan, and as far as I can tell, very little has been done in all these nine intervening years. And yet, a different citizens advisory committee was formed, the Stevens Creek Trail Task Force. And I believe that this task force, while doing a great deal of good work, has done a great disservice in ignoring the special protections afforded McClellan Ranch by the city by proposing the construction of a new hard-surface trail in a new trail alignment. Every few years, some new encroachment of urbanization or some inappropriate activity is proposed to be placed in McClellan Ranch, and every few years, the mission statement, the guidelines and regulations, the master plan, and the very essence of the existence of McClellan Ranch has to be defended and protected from these proposals. So far, the values represented in McClellan Ranch have been upheld.
Thank you very much.
But like all environmental battles, victories are temporary and defeats are permanent, and I hope that you will consider that. I would like to give these to whomever can distribute my copies to you.
Dave will take them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a great deal to say on this subject, and obviously, I'm not going to get to say it all tonight.
We all accept mail, too, if you have further thoughts. Next up, last card I have is David Greenstein. So if you wish to speak, and you haven't yet, you can grab a card off the, there you go, and hand it to anybody. David?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is David Greenstein. I live on Burn Avenue. I also happen to chair the Stevens Creek Trail Task Force, but I'm really here as a resident to make a request, and that is that Stevens Creek Trail is really completing a promise that the city has made to the citizens. And this really benefits, I think, mainly children and families. And as a last point, multi-use does make sense on some portions of this trail. First off, Cupertino has been very generous. The taxpayers of Cupertino, back in the 1960s, decided that it was really important to get open space, and we didn't own very much open space back then. But over the years, we've been acquiring, and taxpayers have been acquiring, this wonderful open space, and it's all been driven by the fact that we have Stevens Creek Trail on the general plan. So since the 1960s, we've been acquiring properties for the purpose of putting a trail through and create open space so the community can enjoy this space. We have gotten the Sims property, McClellan Ranch, Blackberry Farm, finally, the Stockelmeier property, and most recently, the Ranch of San Antonio property. So we have all this wonderful land. In the last couple of years, we put the final pieces to this, and now it's time to start looking at the trail. This is the time to complete that promise. I think that it will benefit children and families and residents most because parents are going to take their kids on this trail. They want to take them to safe places, and it's nice not to have to go very far. It's just like a park. An all-trans study found that 15% of our children walk or bike to school, and that was studied done to our tri-school area. And the Department of Transportation study shows that we really do need trails because in their study, they found that the highest death rate for kids is car accidents, kids in cars and kids around cars. So I do think that we need places that are not, don't involve cars, and trails are a perfect place. Finally, multi-use does make sense on some of these trails. In Blackberry Farm, it makes sense because we do have a lot of commuting kids that come from the Creston area. They come down Burn Avenue every morning, 7:30 to 9 o'clock in the morning, and you can come, and you can watch these kids walk down the street. It would be nice to be able to provide them some alternatives other than just streets. So I'm just requesting that Stevens Creek Trail complete the promise that was made to Cupertino. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. I have another card here from Alex Cy. And Alex, maybe we can point out where Alex's house is.
Yes, yes, actually.
He has a special interest, I think, in this.
My house is literally inside the Blackberry Farm, and I've been involved in a few meetings with the task force, and I have a few comments to bring back with the city council. So first of all, I think we are moving a little bit ahead of ourselves because I don't think the Blackberry Farm master plan is in place. So I don't understand, without the master plan in place, how can we just draw a trail and make a decision on how the trail can be aligned within the Blackberry Farm? So I think the trail, once it's set up, is going to be an asset for a long time to our city, our community, or it may not be an asset, it can be a disadvantage if we design it wrong. So on this aspect, I think my main concern is, I think at least we need to have a master plan in place saying which is the zoning plan inside Blackberry Farm, which is a pool area people can enjoy, and which is a trail alignment which go along with this zoning. So for example, right now in the Blackberry Farm, I think every time when we advertise the Blackberry Farm, we show the pool and picnic area. So I think that's the prestige area inside the Blackberry Farm. And it's very nice in the summertime, parent and children can, children can play in the pool area, and parent can just sit on the grass, on the picnic area, to enjoy the summer. And with this alignment, I think, if you look at this alignment, this is the pool, and this would be the alignment.
Alex, could you grab the microphone because we're recording the meeting and-
There's one over there.
There's one by the screen. We just want to capture your voice.
Sorry. So I think this will be the new trail going through the area, and this is not just a tree. This is, I think there are some zone, the grass area, people can sit here. So if we put this trail here, we are talking about maybe a 15 by 16 feet strip of grass area be taken out from the existing law. And if we can look in detail at the picture, that's the prestige area in the Blackberry Farm. That's every time when we publicly, when we advise Blackberry Farm, that's what we're showing to the people. So this is around this area. And this is, I think, to me, is a big disturbance of the existing very good alignment. So I think this need to go along, we need to think more to consider this with the master plan. And maybe this is the area should not be disturbed. This is a very good area, people enjoy it a lot, and it's working out well. So that's, that's one concern. I think I have, I've been living with in Blackberry Farm for 10 years or so, I know it very well, and I think Michael would also agree with me on this. And that's a very good area for us to keep. The other part is like the entrance. I think the entrance probably in previous meetings, people already point out, the entrance right now is very good because with the high traffic and in the summertime, it's very busy. And I don't know whether if we are considering further development of Blackberry Farm, how do we ensure that a good entrance is fit into the master plan? For example, in summertime, we have a school bus, a lot of school buses is going into the Blackberry Farm, and right now, it's just going to burn and going to a small street, driving through the residential area into the Blackberry Farm, and it's actually very dangerous because every day I need to travel. If you have a two-car going to the small strip, the entrance here, it's actually very entrance. We got parked visitor walking on the sideline, and you got school bus plus the night. It's not a good space, big space for the two-car and the visitors. So I think if this can be added to the Stevens Creek and have it redesigned, then that would be better. And one issue I think we brought up in the task force meeting as well is, we don't understand why we need to draw all this facility into the same area. We have a pool area, why do we need to draw the trail into the pool area and redesign the entrance? Should we just redevelop it and have a better zoning and have a better overall design so that the trail can be enjoyed by the trail user, the pool can be enjoyed by the pool user, and vice versa? So that's, I think, I also talked with some of our neighbors, and actually, the entrances and the traffic have a lot of concern, and if this is going to be extended in the future, I think it's something worth for us to consider.
Thank you, Alex. You're out of time, so if you want to do a quick summary, go for it.
Quick summary. So I think with this trail, I think I do discuss with the task force, this would be the trail if we don't have a good option. But I think we may have a better option because this one is not very good. If you look at the history, initially, we have a trail on the west side, and people don't want it, and then we moved to the east side, but at the same time, neighbors feel they are not getting involved very much. And the history shows we have a three alternative. All of them are kind of ridiculous to me. One is two-high bridge, and then two-tunnel later on, and even when I discussed with the consultant, this is not his or her responsibility. But there's an alternative saying right around my house. So I think we should be able to work more intelligently to find a better overall design fit into the master plan.
Okay, thanks, Alex. Thank you very much. Okay, that ends my cards. Does anybody have a question, a new question for anybody in the room? Anybody from council?
I'd like to see how staff respond to some of the input from the public. You know, I think we have a number of input from the public, whether it be neighborhood issues, whether it be McClellan Ranch and the compatibility with a trail through McClellan Ranch, question of whether it is necessary to have the trail go through the swimming pool area. I think those are all good questions. And then the question of park entrance, whether Stevens Creek versus Burn as an option for part of the trail. I'm sure you've heard these before, so.
Maybe we can work backwards, and we'll start with some of Alex's comments. Alex raised three issues. Why don't we do the Blackberry Farm master plan first? Can we change the entrance to the park, which is what Mr. DeSanti also brought up? And then why put the trail in the pool area? Okay, the pool area is driven exclusively by the fact that we're trying to keep the trail separate from the fee-use area of the park. If that policy were to change, and the city were willing to forego some revenue generated by entrance fees, right now, Blackberry Farm operates where you come into the park and there's a per-person charge to use the park. It's the belief by staff that if we have a trail that's fully integrated with the park, that some people may park out at Blue Pheasant and walk in and not pay those fees. And if we're willing to withgo those fees, we could put the trail many other places along the east bank of the trail. But we were driven by the fact that our direction as consultants was to keep that use separate.
I can also add that some of the neighborhood concerns about parking that would be generated by the trail might be exacerbated if you, if people figured out you could get to Blackberry for free by parking in the neighborhood and walking in on the trail. So we thought that the potential downsides were greater than the benefits there. So we thought that the potential downsides were greater than the benefits there.
And then another option would be to totally change how Blackberries run. Right now, instead of paying per person to enter the park and then you have use of all the facilities, you could charge for the pool area. So the rest of the park is free unless you have a church or a corporate picnic site. And then you would pay to enter the pool area that Alex talks about as one of the prestige or, you know, highly sought-after areas. And most of that area is actually already fenced. But those are programmatic changes to how Blackberry Farm is run. So, but it's important for you to know that.
And Alex is correct that we are just on the front end of the Blackberry Farm master plan process. And depending on the input we get from the community, that, that might be an issue, the whole idea of how fees are assessed. If we want to get more community use, we may end up changing the fee structure. But the task force was charged with getting from point A to point B. And under the current operating scheme, and I think they probably wrestled with the entrance to Blackberry Farm more than anything else. It was probably the most challenging part of their task. I think they came up with the best alternative that they could under the constraints that we gave them, which is our current operation.
Let me speak to the McClellan Ranch master plan and the ordinances. McClellan Ranch was indeed set up to be a nature preserve. And it's eventually going to come back to the council as a policy direction is a trail, i.e. a paved trail, in concert with that master plan. The master plan supports a trail, but it does not support a paved trail. However, when we worked with the McClellan Ranch task force on this issue, we thought that their recommendation would be a soft-surface trail. And actually, their recommendation was for a multi-use paved trail. And that's why the task force made that recommendation. And they thought that a multi-use path, not through the meadow, but behind the community gardens and through the old walnut orchard was compatible with the farm operation. Now, that does not speak for every community member, but it was interesting for us to have gotten that feedback because we had assumed the feedback would be different than that. And that's what drove, that's in part what drove the use decision in that area. And mind you, there is also a segment of the community who would like to see a soft-surface trail, the entire length of area C and D, not just McClellan, but the entire area.
My recollection of part of their reasoning was that they, they wanted to draw people away from the Riparian Trail. That is, they didn't want people going through the park. They don't want more traffic in the Riparian Trail, nor to remove it.
That, and I think there was a very strong desire to preserve the open meadow and not to impact that beautiful vista as you drive into McClellan or walk into McClellan and the habitat that it supports, which is unusual habitat because in our valley, we have, in limited extents, preserved some of the Riparian corridor, but generally, we've built right up to the edge of the creek. There are no meadows and flatlands around. That's why species like the burrowing owl are diminishing because there is no open space left. There's hill property and there's some minimal creekside property. McClellan is very unusual in having that open meadow.
So another question was about the street access to the Blackberry Farm picnic area. That is Burn versus through the golf course.
I must say that from the trail standpoint, we did not look at a new, a brand-new entrance to Blackberry Farm. That was outside of our scope of work. That is an issue I'm sure that will come forward in the Blackberry Farm master plan process. And on the flip side of that, the idea of moving the access off of Burn to Stevens Creek Boulevard is not a simple one because you have the Stockelmeyer site, the fantastic orange orchard, the only orchard left on the creek. You would have a significant roadway bridge that would have to cross Stevens Creek. You have a listed species within the corridor, the steelhead, as well as potential for the western pond turtle and red-legged frog. Any development, any change to the habitat of that significance ultimately would not even be the council's purview. It would be the purview of National Marine Fisheries, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, Department of Fish and Game because of the listed species. And if a goal is to preserve and protect the corridor, the access off of Burn does not impact the corridor because it comes in from the opposite side. If you come in through Stockelmeyer, you're going to pave right along the creek, right across the creek. Or if you come in through the golf course, say you rebuilt the golf course, it's very similar, but you may not have to cross the creek if you came through the golf course, but the whole golf course would have to be redone.
Or you'd come in off Farlap and put an intersection there and take out the blue pheasant. So, and you know how the email's been running on that. So it's not a simple issue to relocate the entrance to Blackberry Farm.
Get your questions answered.
Yes, I just want to ask, in terms of the trail going through the pool area, that grass, does it actually go through that grass? How does it go through?
I'm going to point on this map here. And the pool is here. No, no, I'm sorry. You know, that's, this is the snack bar right here. This is the pool here and this is the restroom building that supports the pool. The trail, here's the road. This is the very edge of the road that comes in to get access to the other portions of Blackberry. There are some beautiful live oak trees that are here. The depressed pathway would be outside of the oaks and it'd be at the very top of the lawn. This whole area is the grassy lawn area. We tried to keep it as close to the road as possible to impact as little of the lawn as necessary, but it would indeed be at the very top end of that lawn area. And if you stand here, this lawn is sloped. It's almost like being in an amphitheater because the sloping goes in this direction. You can sit on the lawn and actually look at the pool and watch your children. It's a very nice setup. And then the trail would cross the other entry road here and then swoop down behind the retreat center.
Thank you.
So we tried to minimize that footprint, but it is indeed in the upper portion of the lawn area.
Alex?
Congratulations, John, and to you and the rest of the committee. The last time I attended a committee meeting last fall, it seemed to be a lot more contentious and I think the committee has spent innumerable more months going through the plan and trying to solve some of the residents' concerns. At that time, I heard a lot of, at that time last fall, heard a lot of comments regarding security and privacy. And it seems like in the areas that are getting very close to people's homes, if I heard correctly, you're going to drop part of the trail down six, eight feet, six feet and put it on planks instead. And the residents in that area seem to feel a little bit more secure about that. In terms of the trail type, whether it's a soft surface or a paved multi-use surface, which one are we talking about determines, needs more maintenance and upkeep? What will we as a city have to be more attentive to because we're not going to, in either case, be able to lay the trail and then walk away from it?
That's right. That's right. This is an ongoing operation for you if you choose to build it. I would say that the operational costs are identical. You're probably going to want to have some type of patrol on the trail. You want to educate people about the use. I would say that your daily maintenance, which might be litter patrol, things along those lines are going to be the same. I do think your long-term maintenance is more expensive with a soft-surface trail, simply because it's more suspect to rutting and you want folks out there frequently making sure, especially after the rainy season, that all those, any of those potholes or cracks in the surface are repaired so you don't have trip hazards out on the trail. We can minimize that, of course, again, I said with binders in the soil, but ultimately, it's a bit more care.
Okay. And then if I heard you correctly, the binders in the soil for soft surface could help open up access, and I'm talking primarily about wheelchair access to those routes. But when we're talking about day-to-day access, parents with their children on their bikes or their strollers, et cetera, that the hard-surface trail would be better utilized for that?
Very much so, right. And again, you could put a mountain bike on one of these soft-surface trails, but the task force through the community input process determined that the soft-surface trail was narrower, maybe five or six feet, and was not going to be open to bikes, period. It was going to be, again, a more place of reflection, a place focused around environmental education and interpretation. It was not a place really of recreation. If you were to define recreation as, say, active movement on a bike or on inline skates. So that was the definition there. If we did a, you know, a 12-foot-wide soft-surface trail, well, you'd have the width to accommodate the multi-use, but for example, inline skates, which have small wheels, rollerblades, couldn't accommodate that. They would slide. They need a paved surface. So multi-use, if you're going to go the multi-use, you might as well pave it.
And then in terms of cost recovery, would that be a discussion that we would have when we talk more about Blackberry and the master plan for Blackberry? Because that's more of a philosophical question. It's not really for the Trails, Stevens Creek Trails Committee, I think, to come to a conclusion and give us a recommendation.
Yes, exactly. We were trying to find the best way to get from point A to point B. And should the operation of Blackberry Farm change, as you go through the master plan process and review your options there, certainly the trail wouldn't need to be depressed and some adjustments could be made to the trail at that time. But for now, under our current scenario, that was the way to get through.
And quite frankly, just to clarify, it's my belief, based on our last task force meeting, that the task force is going to recommend these features, these trail features as they are, but they are also going to send along a caveat to you. That is, if in the master plan process, cost recovery can be tackled, they would like the trail to move closer to the corridor and be more integrated with the park. But for reasons of concluding the task force and their, all their volunteer hours and finishing this project, we're going to send that through the environmental review, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you need to build that piece. You know, there are many decisions down the road.
Okay, any more questions as opposed to comment? Just questions?
Just one question. You mentioned about one of the challenges is to build a crosswalk across Stevens Creek Boulevard. You know, Stevens Creek Boulevard crossing the bridge is right at the lowest spot between the two coming traffics. One is coming north and one is going south. So there will be a safety issue to build a crosswalk across Stevens Creek. Of course, if you build this way, you'll cut into Farlap, which is closer to the, to the creek trail. But if you go, as soon as you come out from the bridge, if you go towards north along Stevens Creek and make the cross across Foothill Boulevard, would that be a safer route rather than just cut right, right across a very, very busy street?
That's a good question. And the task force asked that, too. And we evaluated both going north and south in...
Actually, west, I think.
Or east and west. Yeah. If you were to go up towards Foothill, we looked at trying to put a trail along the sidewalk and widening the sidewalk there so you could ride all the way up to that intersection. And that was preferable then to going in the other direction because at least people who want to go in the other direction already can go in the other direction. They get in the right bike lanes. But there just is no land in that area to get people in that direction and you're taking people about a half-mile out of their way potentially, depending on where they want to travel to. So we didn't feel that we could manage that. And we also looked at going the other way to Orange and Mann Drive, which is going actually out of the people's way who want to go on foot to go to Foothill. And in addition, we looked at underpasses in that area. We even long ago, months ago, looked at an overpass in that area. And we also looked at a signalized intersection. And a signalized intersection, which was our first choice, met with great resistance from the Farlap residents. Matter of fact, signals anywhere in the city made with great resistance from the residents. So our hope is that with the number of controls that we have placed at Stevens Creek, that it will pass environmental review, but it will indeed be going through traffic analysis. And it may come back in a modified form. I don't know the answer to that.
How about the underpass?
Yeah. The underpass, it was not feasible to do a creek underpass in the creek channel because of the road. We proposed a tunnel underneath, but it seems too costly to do a tunnel to go underneath into a very small piece of city-owned land on the other side of the creek when we're not going to extend the trail downstream any further. So, you know, a cost of a million dollars for an underpass versus maybe 250 for a very well-designed and secure crosswalk, it just didn't seem appropriate. But we did evaluate that and that's also in the background reports.
Any more questions? Now, you're not looking for comment tonight, right? You're just reporting to us, is that correct? Theresa, maybe you should.
There's no comment unless there's direction of some sort.
Yeah, there's, you can't take action tonight the way it's been noticed. However, if we got, if you have comments about what we're sending out to the other agencies, we would appreciate that input before we do it.
Okay, so comments, but you can't, you don't want to draw conclusions? Anybody want to do, take a stab at that fine line?
I'll start. And I guess I do sort of have a question. You know, one of my favorite trails is the one in Monterey, which is, which is partially paved and right next to it is the Soft Trail. And I like that a lot because the bikers and the, and the strollers and the, and the rollerbladers can be on the hard surface and people that just want to walk or hike can be on the soft surface. I know it takes up more space, but did you look into that and what was your, you know, what kinds of reactions or responses did you get to that?
I've actually worked on part of that trail in front of the aquarium when the aquarium opened their second training. Really, the trail down to Monterey in front of the aquarium in Canary Row is like a promenade. It is very big. The trail, the hard surface of the trail alone is 12 feet, just the hard surface. And that accommodates the little, I don't know, jitneys or whatever that they rent down there. And then there's a soft surface. And a lot of times, that soft surface is closer to the ocean. So if you want to stop and enjoy the views, you can do that. Width is dictated by use. They, because of the draw, the recreational amenities that are there, had to develop a very wide trail. I don't think you need that kind of a width. Could we do both here? We could, but in the corridor, especially the corridor subject to flooding, the more soils that you put along the trail, if you were to do an actual sandy-type trail, the more maintenance you have because you've got to sweep the trail so your bikes don't have accidents. What we could do, and we will do, and I probably had not clarified this, if you were to build a multi-use trail, we generally recommend two-and-a-half-foot gravel shoulders on either side of the trail. Many residents consider that's just more width, making that trail bigger, more paved, more of an impact on the environment. But those gravel shoulders do two things. They provide a surface for joggers and two, they reduce the maintenance because it's a compacted gravel surface and weeds and shrubbery don't grow in that to then grow into your asphalt to then break up the asphalt. So a well-designed trail, and we could go down to eight feet possibly with two-and-a-half-foot shoulders. But if you get too narrow, this is happening on a section of the Bay Trail up in Mill Valley that's heavily used, the people just, they can't fit on the trail, so they spread out. And this area is in a salt marsh habitat and they're just trampling the salt marsh. And now it's just a mud field because the trail was too small to begin with. So it depends on size. I don't think the use here, because it's really a neighborhood trail, is going to be that high. So there's a potential to downsize it a little bit and give them more shoulder room. I don't think it'll be as busy as a Mountain View Trail. It's not as much, it's not as commute-oriented, it's not connected to light rail. It's a place for residents to get out and meet one another and walk and exercise.
On to comments, and I'll just do my comments since I have the mic here. I want to commend all of you on all the work you've done. I know that this has been a difficult task and it's been somewhat surprising to those of us who've been on council for a while to see the kind of negativity we got from a lot of the community when, I think, most of us think of trails as a very positive light, a way to get out and exercise and visit nature. And I'm a naturalist, so, and I like to exercise and most people do. And I think we didn't think through it in some ways that some of our community members did, that they felt it was an imposition on their privacy and their quality of life. And I know it has taken a huge outreach and a lot of time and a lot of effort and a lot of patience and understanding on the part of everyone on the task force, and I thank you all for that. And those people who started out being very concerned and upset, who have begun, as this gentleman said, to say, why don't we be a part of the solution rather than the problem? Because the reality... Because the reality is, the majority of the people in this community do want trails, and we represent everyone in the community. And we are mandated by that to try to make the best decisions for the most. And so, trails are important to all of us. I also feel very strongly about McClellan Ranch Park. I am one of the people that does believe that that is a unique preservation that a long time ago, the people that live in this community and the people that have governed this community made a commitment to. And I do believe that as we do our trail system, we have to respect that commitment, and we have to address it along that aspect of the trail. And I would be one of those that would be fighting against trespassing on that. I do believe there's a way to do that, and I do believe we need to all come together and figure out the best way to do that. Blackberry Farms likewise is a unique gift that this community and previous council members have had the forethought to preserve. And I would be very, very anxious for us to include the Blackberry Farms master plan. I do not think we can hold up the Stevens Creek Trail process, but I do think we all need to understand that as that master plan goes forward, we need to have the flexibility to change or adapt or adjust whatever decisions we make because Blackberry Farms is a very unique and special part of the open space and recreational area that we provide in this community. Having said all that, I am absolutely delighted with the progress that's been made, and I would like to not only thank Therese for her leadership, but Richard Lowenthal, who has, as we all take our different roles on council, we can't cover everything in the amount of depth we have to. We sort of pick and choose, and Richard has really been our trails person, and he's done a lot of work on this, too. So, I'm very pleased. This was very helpful, I think, as a council person to get this feedback. I hope the community has found it to be helpful and that everybody will continue to work with us as we move forward in this project.
Sandy? Patrick, do you have a thing to say?
The only thing I want to say is I'm pleased to see that the communities are willing to work together to come back with a win-win type of situation, that everybody, you know, will support the project. Naturally, I'm really concerned about respecting the privacies of the neighborhoods, the people. The trails are in their backyard, and there are a lot of good input from the members of the public and staff and consultants done a great job. But you should take into consideration some of the inputs from staff, from the members of the public, and build on that input and come up with a good project. It's going to be very challenging, you know, for everybody, but I think working together, we can make it, make it work.
Michael?
Yes, I agree with my council members. I think, also commend the task force. It's a lot of work. Just can imagine all the meetings that you folks had. Must have been very exciting, and just a lot of work. And so, you really deserve a lot of thank yous for taking up a process and taking the extensive input that you have on the neighbors. And unless neighbors couldn't make it today, otherwise it really reflects your work. And I think it's definitely going in the right direction. It's a big type of project, so we expect a lot of challenges. And there are some parts of it that will continue to, I think, that we could continue to think about, the McClellan Ranch issue. And I think that, you know, it's important for us to think about the compatibility there and then sort of weighing. It's always public good. There's always issues of weighing there, as in issues of weighing with the Blackberry Farm, whether that's the best option or what comes with the Blackberry Farm master plan, and what are some creative solutions that we might have there. Some of the issues about crossings, I'm sure that the reports that we will be getting as we work with other agencies will give us more insights, but at this point, it's, it flags a number of issues that we have to think about and consider very seriously, and some of the neighborhood issues, too. But overall, I think it's exciting. I think we're moving in the right direction. We've got some challenges that we've already successfully met with the redesign of the trail, and there are some others that we need to understand a little bit more and be able to analyze and think a little bit more and get a little bit more input into, too.
Thank you, Michael. Dolly?
Again, Jonna, thank you and the rest of the committee and Therese for your guidance. There's, I won't echo the comments that my council members, fellow council members have already made, but I wanted to bring up, and Jonna, you've probably seen this website, but I think it's called Trail, Tracks to Trails?
Rails to Trails.
Trails, Rails to Trails. And there's a very good commentary on that in regards to somebody starting off four years ago in his particular city, having come out to a trail meeting that was to build a trail in his backyard where he was extremely opposed, and then how he's come 180-degree turn in seeing the trail as a real asset to the community. Something that I was wondering is, as we develop this farther and go through our different processes, before the council brings us back, is have you taken any of the residents who are still a little hesitant, maybe a little weary, who have some concerns on any kind of a field trip? Because I'd be very much interested in going on a field trip to check out the Mountain View Trail, to check out the Lost Gaddis Trail, and I've been there by myself often, but I haven't actually talked to the residents to see if they've come kind of full circle and how things are going there.
We did, for the benefit of the task force and the Parks and Rec Commission, conduct field trips, but in addition to that, I did about an hour-long presentation that we could repeat and rebroadcast where I got video clips from Rails to Trails around the country. I worked with the Rails to Trails Conservancy on it, and looked at trail projects where people were interviewed around the country about trails, had slides of some of our local trails, including the Lost Gaddis Creek Trail, the Stevens Creek Trail and the Coastside Trail, and then dealt with some of the security issues and had Skip Shervington do a piece on security and what's going on in the area now. So, if that's your pleasure, before you see the full feasibility study, I can either get you videos of that, or we could do, you know, somehow do a broadcast of that presentation, but it was about an hour long. Or you could all, we could also take the council out on a field trip.
I would, the commission, I think, gained a lot from the field trip. We toured, built trails as well as trail pieces that were difficult issues in Cupertino. And if you'd like to go out individually or as a council, we'd be happy to take you out on a tour.
And we would open this up to the residents that it might be viewing in cyberspace or TV.
Certainly, because, well, if the council were to go as a whole, under the Brown Act, we'd have to do that.
Well, we'd have to notice it, sure.
Right. And you may individually want to take the opportunity to go and visit some of these sections now. Please do be advised that some of it is on private property, and generally, we arrange opportunity and access to those parcels in advance of leading tours there, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Go to McClellan and walk McClellan and see how you individually feel about the two choices of trail alignments in that area.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a couple of comments. One is, I take to heart the first of the goals very seriously. In my mind, this trail is a failure if the, if the environment of the creek itself isn't better when we're done than it is today. And I think it trumps other issues. So, we need to protect the creek. It's like one of the very few creeks here that has the potential of being a wild creek and supporting fish coming from the bay, so I'd like to keep that up on the top. The other thing is, Patrick brought it up, but I want to reiterate about security. I think the neighbors need to feel more secure in their environment when we're done than they are today. So, for instance, the neighbors along the Hall Road, if it takes patrolling or whatever for that to be, or fencing, or grade changes, or whatever, but I think the goal always has to be that people don't suffer security loss as we do the trail. I think the field trip's a good idea, and I'd like you to put that together and offer it to the council, and probably in the fashion of a public meeting, so that we can, we explicitly invite the public to come along. And if that means we have to do it in phases because there's a lot of people interested, then we have, then so be it. But I think a field trip, I think we'd all like the chance to see, not only here, but the impact in other cities, if we could. Like everybody else, I thank you for all the hard work. I think there's a lot ahead, and I want to assure people here that we will have hearings where we try to come to conclusions later, and there'll be many more opportunities for people to speak their mind as this develops. The one piece I'm unhappy with is the Blackberry Farm area. So, I'm a little bit on the other side of the line on that one. I'm hoping that the master plan has something to offer us so that we can do a better job than this. I don't really like the tunnels, and I think we can do, we can come up with something more creative to make it feel more natural. Now, to me, the best idea is to lead people into the park and show them a way out, but all this constraining and having them with fences around them and all that just seems terrible to me. And I'm hoping, you know, we can find, use the wristband idea, which has been offered up, or charge for the pool, or charge for the parking, but solve the other parking issue some other way. But it's just not, doesn't feel done to me. So, I'm hoping that you'll take an active interest in this McClellan and Blackberry Farm master plan so that we solve this problem. This doesn't feel solved. I think you've got enough to go forward on. The other areas look pretty good, and we can go forward with this, but I sure hope we revisit it and fix that area up into something that's more reasonable. It doesn't feel right to me at all right now. So, go ahead and go forward with it, but expect us to be back on your case to get something that just feels more like it belongs there. I, the tunnels just don't feel right to me, and the fences, I mean, the idea of a fenced area at the top of the grassy viewing area for the pool just all feels like a mistake. So, I'm hoping you'll find something better as we go forward. That's it for comment. Thank you very much for all your hard work. I know it's been a lot of hard work for you and the community. There are people that I saw at, like, a dozen of these meetings, members of the community that just come to speak out, and I think we've come to a much better place because of community feedback than we were without it. And I think we have built community, whether you're for an issue or against an issue or some, for some specific or not, but it's the right way to go, even though it's some, it's quite difficult, I think, to manage the community input process. Nonetheless, it's the right way to do it, and I applaud you for going that route and all the hard work it entails. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'm going to make an announcement, which will seem totally out of place here, but nonetheless, I need to do it. There's a, there's an auction going on for some property we're selling in the Oak Valley area over in Conference Room A. It's starting at 6:00 P.M. And I need to say, anyone who wishes to bid on the three lots for sale in Oak Valley must submit their written bid in the city clerk's office by 6:00 P.M. The bid opening and auction will take place after 6:00 P.M. in Conference Room A. Thank you.
Bring your check.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. We appreciate your input and the civility of the meeting.
I have that Visa line credit.
Yeah, right. What we didn't know about it. It's like, well, now that.
Run on over.[1754.13]